Good morning. So in our spare time, we have looked at the realignment of some programs to try to make them more efficient, maybe a little more localized, sort of keeping with experience what you heard during your regular session about trying to drive things down to the local level. Several weeks ago, well, actually a month ago now, we had a forum in the March, the Chancellor began a talk with the staff presidents at both Shelton and at Law's Selma about how we might better align some of the program delivery that is actually taking place on the Demotola's Alabama campus, which really it's two sites, it's two buildings up there. And we reached the point where it was time because we had finished the spring semester, of course, and we have the summer to work through transition there. So technically, what's going to take place is that the programs that have been offered by Shelton at the Demotola's sites will be realigned with Law's Selma. That involves a lot of detailed work, transferring property and equipment. It involved the transfer of lease obligations located at that site. So I worked with the two presidents to arrive at a memorandum of understanding as to specifically what pieces of property would be transferred, what leases or existing contracts that are associated with the operation of those facilities, and that included things like janitorial service or security services, existing contracts for office equipment, different kinds of things like that that are affiliated with the operations. So the idea was to move the operational expense along with revenue generating side of the program for the Demotola's sites underneath Law's Selma's umbrella. Because that is not a designated instructional site, we won't be going before eight with regard to this, although I think we're in discussion about that, there will be required the submission of that transfer by Shelton from Saks, and that will also take place to gain its approval. About two weeks ago now, or three weeks ago, we met and actually had a closing, if you want to call it that, between the colleges in which the bills are sold for the truck and trailer, tractors and trailers primarily, that was the big equipment that was transferred. There was an inventory listing agreed to, according to the presidents relative to personal property, which included things like supplies that are used in the welding and HVAC programs, miscellaneous things like computers and office equipment which are at the site that will now be moved over under Law's Selma's umbrella. As the presidents meeting last weekend, I believe Dr. Mitchell had confirmed that he had transferred the insurance, obtained the insurance on the vehicles, and title had been transferred to those things to Law's Selma. There was some pending Perkins reimbursement applications that had been completed and processed for funds to be distributed to Shelton that had been pending for equipment and various things that had been purchased for the programs, and I think that has now been accomplished. I'm not sure the money's been delivered, but the application's been reviewed. And then the final piece of that is there was some unspent funds relative to grant awards that the Chancellor's office had made to Shelton for these projects, and the unspent portion of those funds will be returned to ACCS for the Chancellor to be to free out of it. So to my knowledge, now, both presidents have gotten a complete picture of all the things that are to be transferred and kept, and the equipment is now identified and swallowed in that and proper order to be. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? Item two is recognition of session applied science and machine technology enterprise.
Trustees, good morning. I'm Mark Russo, Director of Current Technical Education here at the System Office, and in a previous life I was in machines for eighteen years. So Enterprise has to give a short preamble to their presentation. Just recently, over the past couple of weeks, I've been working very made and put together a presentation on all the workforce initiatives going on in the state. Using the ABCs of a good presentation, add just every thirty, they're pressing down to ninety slides. And so I pulled up a similar presentation, April 2016, we had eighteen. And that shows you, I remember working very hard back in 2016, but it shows you the impact under the guidance of the board, leadership division of our Chancellor, the impact our colleges are having. It really is impressive. And so as we look at what's going on in the service area of Enterprise, there is a lot of opportunity there. One thing that we've learned under our new leadership, our Chancellor, is that our programs don't just have to keep up with workforce demands, they can actually lead economic growth. That's one thing that Jeff Williams has had a lot of meetings with us about, that if we can start putting these programs in place, it doesn't just help you, it's the industry that it brings to an industry. That we currently have five machine tool programs that teach fifth access machinery. That means those companies can buy those advanced machines, and they can provide more efficient and better services to their customers. So we're really excited about what's going on at Enterprise, because right now Southern Union and Trenton have been kind of flexing to help support that demand, they've got demands around service demand, and the service area there in Enterprise has been growing and growing. So they've got a few new companies, and we're hoping with this program that they'll be able to spur continuity and not be broke. That combined with their advanced manufacturing program coming together, so we're really excited about it.
Thank you, Mark. Good morning, trustees. Chancellor Baker, I'm Danny Long, the Dean of Construction for Enterprise State Community College. I appreciate this opportunity to discuss this proposal with you this morning. This concept was a direct result of conversations with existing business and industry, as well as emerging industries in Pike County, and I'd just like to take a minute to recognize V E Campbell, our Workforce Development Director, who is on the ground daily and communicating those things back to the colleges and administration, and really serving as a catalyst to get some of these programs off the ground. The machine tooling program will be offered as an associate applied science degree on our Ozark campus, and will complement the expanding curriculum offerings including mechatronics and our recently added C E L program. Program equipment costs are estimated at approximately $244,000, and current average salary for machinists in our area is $4,000 a year. Our future graduates or machinists will use machine tools such as lathes, milling machines, and machining centers to produce precision metal parts. Although they may produce large quantities of one part, precision machinists often produce small batches of one-of-a-kind items. They use their knowledge of working properties of metals and their skill with machine tools to plan and carry out the operations needed to make machine products that meet precise specifications. The machine tooling program at Enterprise State will train students to carry through to completion the construction and repair of all kinds of metallic and non-metallic parts, tools, and machines. It also teaches students to understand clueprints and specifications. Students will learn to use all machinist's hand tools and machine tools such as lathes, drill presses, milling machines, computer numerical control machines, computer assisted programming equipment, and graphics program. Recent M Z data indicates an average of forty-two annual openings in our service area. However, our program will be the only one in the southeastern region of the state, therefore we're going to be thankful to draw on that extended service area as Mr. Russo mentioned. In a survey conducted with our current students, twenty-five percent of one hundred and ten students indicated that they would be interested in enrolling in a program like this, and out of five hundred high school students, approximately thirty percent indicated that they would consider enrolling in a machine tooling program. I'd like to point out that the curriculum for the machinist's degree plan and our planned mechatronics degree plan for this fall both include four classes that were aligned with the M S S C C P T credential, therefore allowing shared faculty to teach the first semester of both of these degree plans. In addition to the M S S C credential, students will also have the opportunity to acquire the N I M S or National Institute of Metalworking Skills Certification. Currently, we have agreements with nine high schools in our service area to implement the M S S C curriculum with high school students. As students earn the quality, safety, manufacturing, and maintenance credentials, Enterprise State has agreed to articulate these classes and apply them to the degree plan. Essentially, these students will be able to earn twelve credit hours of their first semester of either the mechatronics or the machine tooling program, which equates to about a $1,900 scholarship. Not only will this increase the number of students crediting in our region, but we also feel like this opportunity will fuel the pipeline of future students in both of these programs. Lastly, we have plans to offer this program in a flex hybrid model that will allow for a substantial amount of flexibility for our students, and will allow incumbent worker training to occur concurrently alongside our credit-bearing students. Students will be presented their theory and lecture through an engaging digital platform, and then will schedule their lab time at convenience to the students. This delivery model is similar to the one we're currently developing for our mechatronics and will certainly accommodate the employed student, students with family responsibilities, but most importantly, be driven by a competency-skill-based model maximizing hands-on lab time learning skills necessarily for all five persons. This time, please, any questions?
Hello, Mr. Manfred, do you have any agreements verbally or written with any man to certain areas?
We don't have any hard commitments, but Ian has had lots of conversations with member, Dykes, both.
Yes, so we've met several companies in the region, and I've received actual letters of support for the program, but there's several smaller companies around that do kind of custom machining, things like that, and there's supports, and obviously some of the works. In Pike County, that's pretty much what they call it, and so you've got some of those that are going that way. What we're thinking now for this is, as manufacturing industry expands, you know, they have their manufacturing process, and a lot of times they use, they do, they rely heavily on machinists and machinery programs, you know, for support and like that. Some of these companies that we currently work with do this in-house, they may not even really consider a full-time machining operation, but they do have small part-time work that they do in-house, it's a problem, but as Asian workforce that lives experts in this area, they're contracting out of something out of this work to standardize the program. So the thing is, if work's not going away, it's just maybe changing hands from, we're no longer really in-house to contract out somebody. So I think it's a really important, important area. And what we're seeing as well, you know, we talked about friendships, several of these companies we've met with, they're already doing this, but they're all passionate friendships, they're bringing young people in who have no formal training or education, they're strictly with a mentor, they follow this guy after a while, and so what we're hoping with this program is we can fuse trained, formally trained individuals, and when they go through this stuff, then they will have to go through this process.
And these programs for them, the M S S C, is there a part in there to give students on the ocean then, or before they built into those, or does that need to be added as a separate program? We will be, we will give your students a heads up if you leave.
Yes, we have planning of all of those in that mechatronics program, so I would think that's a reason why we seem to be looking off of that in vision with the number of students.
I'm looking to give your students higher priority.
We're looking at ways with the M S S C C P T certification, ideally we'll have students that are.
Thank you for your presentation. We have two items on the facilities, both from Lawson State Community College.
Good morning. Eric Ward, President of Lawson State Community College, and good morning to the Chancellor and members of the board. We have two items that we'd like to share with you, items that will be on both campuses, both the Vestman campus and the Birmingham campus. And the first item that we're looking at is on the Vestman campus, and it is a donation of the former foundation board. At the time, it was the Vestman State Technical College Foundation Board, and about fifteen to eighteen years ago, they purchased this piece of property that's adjacent to the existing campus for the use that they were going to create to improve Lawson State, Vestman State at the time. They really never used that, and they had to pay taxes on it, and they're about to dissolve, it seems, at this point. And so they are very interested in donating this property that is valued at $152,000. There is about $2,000 of back taxes that would need to be paid, and then time searches, attorney fees, et cetera. So we have an expense of about $7,000 to pay the back taxes and expenses to acquire the property. We have had a beginning, we've asked A D M to look at the property. Historically, there's never been a building on the property. There is a cell phone tower that's on the property, and anytime you have vacant property sitting there, some people just felt like they needed to come and share their debris and other things that they did not want. And so A D M's in the process of going back to do a complete phase one study to make sure that there will be no liability on part of the college. The land in question is accessible from all sides. On the document we shared, it appears it's in a cul-de-sac, which it is, but we have a piece of property that we can access the potential donation from the south side, and then to the north or east of the property, we also are able to access that property from Lawson's campus. And then there's a road behind the property, which is also owned by Lawson State. So we have several different ways to access the property. It is located between Lawson State Community College property. It would be a great asset to the college. We are landlocked to a fairly significant degree. We're bordered on one side by U S Highway eleven and on the other side by Interstate fifty-nine twenty. So the ability to acquire any additional property would be of great value. So that's where we are right now, still waiting on the final A D M report, and we may, in fact, look at trying to get the debris and the trash removed and the lot cleaned up before things are finalized. So on that particular purchase, any questions?
Okay. Oh, Dr. Ward, I've kind of done a deep dive into this, and looking at the property on Highway eleven there, there's looks like about six acres there, says L S C C there, there is a building there. Across shallow lane, this piece of property that hasn't been used at this time, if you look between the two properties there, it looks like a gas in the property, that's actually a road that goes through there that cannot be accessed because that's where it's medical, so I asked him about doing that. But currently, not any, they're in the two point four acres there. On this back property, questions I've asked Dr. Ward to get us is, what's the cost to clean it up? You guys have seen the pictures, it's got a bunch of buildings, materials, concrete, some drones on it, and he's free to give us the cost on that. All of this property, the whole pieces I just talked about are connected to another piece of property there on Highway eleven and like that. So to the best of my ability, I've done a deep dive into this, and like I said, all my questions have been answered except for the cost of the debris removal to make sure there's nothing buried or hidden, please pop it up for Dr. Ward to get us a call partner. The other thing I asked Dr. Ward to do is go before the county or the city and ask for tax maintenance, hopefully that tax, to make sure going forward, at least we're pro-rated in position. So hopefully we can get some relief from the county or the city to worry this, to give a story of the taxes for education purposes. This has been.
Professor Ward, is there a cell tower located on this property or next to this property?
Well, it's really next to the property. Apparently about twenty years ago, they carved out just a little piece of land, probably twenty yards square where it's actually there, but actually on the part that we would own, it would not be.
So there's no need to invade?
No.
For income purposes, so?
No, sir.
That debris, just because it'll probably under the tower they dropped, so that's not going to clear that up.
And for the debris removal, is what you used all the solid, what you, for instance?
You were just investigating whether you need to phase one.
We're looking at that now, there seems to be a little disagreement, that they're still working it out with A D M. Since the land historically has been vacant, and it's obvious that the debris was brought to the site, they're trying to really validate whether there's a real need to go back and do an extensive involve phase one. So we're waiting on that to happen, but in the meantime, I have spoken with the president of the foundation board, and I think that they're going to be willing to look at moving the debris without cost, is what I'm hoping for.
That'd be wonderful. I read the trip report that they, they just commented on their observations, but gave no recommendation at that time.
Absolutely.
But my thoughts were, if someone knew that this property for many decades has been passed, might the rule out any problems that exist there?
And that's what we're trying to get them to do, to go back and put it in writing, and they just said, a little bit in the letter, historically it's been vacant, just tell us that it's been vacant, there's no need for any kind of extensive phase one study, is what we're hoping for.
I'd be real interested to find out if this can be, the property's conveyed to us before the end of this patch year, if that does, is it pro-rated or whether we're responsible for all of the, you know, all of the property taxes? I doubt they'll pay, but we'll ask that maybe to go through.
Well, we understand now that's about $2,000, $2,100 that needs to be paid now, and the old foundation board never really used it in a tax exempt format. Once we're able to purchase it and acquire, then we'll certainly apply for a payment.
You've got immediately to get this assessed.
Absolutely.
And they might could have worked that out in hindsight, but anyway, this patch year or the end sector, very in the town, so I'm curious if it would be exempt for all of this tax year, which you have to say.
We certainly gonna ask them.
If I say it don't cost nothing, that's.
Yes, sir.
Anyway, we're split here. I'm Captain, you got it well, and the President. Any other questions after this?
I thought it was like, for the, you came in and asked a lot of questions.
Ah, but that's okay, and you know, it's exciting because the young lady that we're working with, one of the consultants that's in the report, is one of the EPA specialists, and she's very much aware that if you purchase a piece of property and you have liability issues, you can get stuck with the expenses of trying to clean it up, and that can be significant. So we want to just make sure that we have no liability. The second piece of property is on the Birmingham campus, and I believe that you all may have a full map of the, yes, the green, the green document that's in your packet. The land that we're looking at is probably some small errors thrown on your document. Like Mr. McNally has the green. Anyway, there's a piece of property immediately across the street from the campus, but also between other property owned by the college. The square block in question, we own sixty percent of the square block right now. Being able to acquire these two additional pieces of property, one has a house on it, the other is a vacant lot. The ownership of the college would go up to about seventy-five percent of that square block. So we're really, we have no immediate need for it, but also the way you manage and plan for the future is trying to control your own destiny. And that lot being directly across the street from the college, we're looking really three, five, seven years out, and while we own a portion of that already, to us it makes sense. The value of the acquisitions for both properties would be about $30,000. The property with the house is valued at $25,000, the lots valued at, it's right at $5,000. And the appraised value of both properties would be about $52,000. So that would be about a $20,000, $21,000 net value of gain for the college. It gives us an opportunity to acquire a piece of property that would be very valuable to the college in the future. Questions?
Dr. Ward, did you raise the price of the house, or leave it standing?
More than likely, we're going to raise it. We have purchased some other properties in the neighborhood, just too much liability to leave houses standing, people wander in them, they go in them, they do all sorts of things. So I am ninety-nine percent sure it's coming down. Yes, ma'am.
I think your approach is good, and you have opportunity to buy these lots and give that entire lot a good approach.
Well, just for the board, it's, our campus is located about seven minutes from Ross Bridge, and Ross Bridge is growing. There is a huge park, Red Mountain Park, that is literally in our back door, and that entire area is changing our entire community. So right now, every piece of land in the immediate area is kind of undervalued right now, but the next five to ten years, it's going to be significant. On that chart, you see four, really four square blocks that moved around going south toward Ross Bridge, and we were able to acquire those through the board some probably seven or eight years ago for a very nominal cost, and they are quickly rising in value because it's really adjacent now to the Red Mountain Park.
Any other question? Under legal, we have two, three, four store operations. Under legal, we have two or three bookstore operations. Good morning to you all. The first item is Enterprise State's request for approval of its entering into a bookstore operation agreement with the PBA Corp. Under the terms and post-agreement, PBA will pay Enterprise State a guaranteed commission of twenty-five thousand dollars annually. That in and of itself will turn around a thirty-seven thousand dollar loss from last year. Enterprise shall receive, in addition to the guaranteed commission, a commission of five percent on commissionable sales that exceed five hundred thousand dollars. PBA will fund a textbook scholarships, five thousand dollars per year. In addition, it will invest one hundred thousand dollars to provide a point-of-sale system at no cost to the college. And in addition, PBA will provide facility investment in an amount of one hundred thousand dollars to include the installation of coffee shop that create a new entrance to bookstore on the Enterprise campus. The action item for you in the book includes an analysis provided by the college along with a financial spreadsheet showing historical data regarding to the operation of the college bookstore in-house. Does anyone have any questions regarding this article?
I did have one question. I have presumption that expenditures for the college is put into place.
Yes.
And we're talking about seven hundred thousand.
We have a question.
I thank the work and thank for the analysis. Again, this is just from white support I think you made earlier.
The next item is Central Alabama Division College's request for approval of its entering into a bookstore operation agreement with MBS Direct LLC. MBS Direct LLC is the online division of Lawrence and Hobson. MBS will pay Central Alabama a signing bonus of twenty-five thousand dollars. In addition, Central Alabama will receive a ten percent commission on new and used trend course material sales and a five percent commission on rental material, sorry, rental course material sales. In addition, the college will receive a two percent commission on digital course materials sales and will receive textbook scholarships in the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars per year. Finally, MBS will invest twenty-five hundred dollars for iPad ordering kiosk at the college. The agreement will be for a period of five years. And the college has included an analysis that is in the materials. This one's a little bit unique in that it's strictly online. Does anyone have any questions regarding this article? The final item we noted as a placeholder, we are still in negotiation on behalf of Cal State Division College with Colette. We are down to two clarification points, and we hope to have an agreement in place, subject to your approval, by the end of the week. But I have included the financial details, which will not change. As those include that Colette will spend up to one hundred and ninety thousand dollars for store improvements to include fixtures and point-of-sale system. The college is guaranteed an annual commission of two hundred and ten thousand dollars plus fourteen percent on commissionable sales in excess of one point five million dollars and a fifteen percent on commissionable sales in excess of two point five million dollars. In addition, Colette will pay a seven percent commission on sales of digital course materials. It will provide annual textbook scholarships in the amount of ten thousand dollars and a one-time payment of seventy-five thousand. Does anyone have any questions regarding the financial details?
Calhoun currently has terminated the agreement with.
PBA.
PBA?
Yes, sir.
And PBA is who, right now, we have a proposal for Enterprise State.
Correct. We made Enterprise State aware of the issues that Calhoun had. They have done their due diligence. They have communicated with Calhoun. They have also communicated with Fisher State, who has entered into an agreement with PBA. Fisher State's experience so far, as is noted in the reports, has been favorable.
Any other questions specifically about Calhoun? Let's transition into a general discussion about bookstore operations. I think this can be fashioned out of our experience as all of you. Another point of the vendors might be to make sure that, just like anything in the system, Chancellor, if the institutions communicate their experiences with the system office, they can make better decisions. All of us.
Right, you have to. No, I agree with you wholeheartedly. And I, you know, there comes a point that, I don't think you've hit the tipping point yet. Maybe there's something going down the road where we look at the system. I don't know. We cover all those schools and things like that, the economies of scale. It may be a lot out there, but it wasn't yet. But maybe the revenue drive of that, to each school, I think will come. I don't know. Just thinking about, maybe working out system. And I think, as you do along, you make a lot of changes in the system. I'm not a problem. There's going to be a lot. This is not always the part of the shared service. I think God, President, will be there. Once we're pulling up, there are a lot of opportunities to say. Like purchase of one of the insurance that you're managing. There were, I think, there's like. We've got to work towards that. Well, when the time is right. It's a good point. I mean, it's a fair damage. We still have a hundred and five.
Any questions or comments from the board concerning bookstore programs? Mr. Ryan, I think, and your work on this, he's been so wonderful. Chancellor, members, I have any other comments? Seeing that, you will stand in German.